Check, check.
Check, check. Mama played guitar, daddy played bass, is that what it is?
Mama played guitar, daddy played bass.
Okay, let me get this out. On. 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 On.
Check, check.
Is mama, mama played guitar, daddy played bass, is that what it is?
Mama played guitar, daddy played bass.
Okay, let me get this out. On.
Yeah. It is.
Am I on?
That's not okay. Tonight. I thought you were out of town tonight.
That's what I just said to her.
Oh, sorry.
I took it, my time off last week.
Oh, nice.
Because I really wanted to be here.
How's that? Okay, you're welcome.
But I didn't hear from anybody not coming.
Are you gonna be welcome down?
Commissioner, we have a chance to build a company like. You hold it down and you see those electric beams. It's about that.
No. You just dropped it. Oh. Oh, that goes on top of them.
I know. You know, I'm gonna skip that. When the last meeting we had before we stopped having meetings, before we didn't know what was happening, I came in here and, and I, we had mics that came out of the desk. And I pulled the rubber thing off and I was just washing everything.
Yeah.
And I squirted it with something and I squeezed it and in the, it was just black. It was disgusting. And it was one of those mics you had to have it. I haven't seen anything embarrassing yet. There's still time. Okay. So I will call us a work study session to order six oh two.
People here.
On February thirteenth, or twenty twenty four. We'll call these.
All right, Chair Riley.
Here.
Vice Chair Shapiro.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Not here.
Commissioner Hazel, not here. Commissioner Tomato.
Here.
And Commissioner Bullcart.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Kristen, did you hear some, anybody saying they were coming, like, all this marketing?
I did not hear anybody, nobody told me they were not coming. So I think we, Commissioner Hazel is late and possibly Davis might be late because of work.
Or showing up at six thirty, right?
Yeah. Well, I think you all voted on it to be at six.
Oh, I know, but then.
But I had to look twice too to just see what time it was.
You did. I should have.
Yeah. Sorry. Well, part of it is I put in my, on my schedule at five thirty, so I'm not late, but.
We should have done that.
Yeah.
Oh. Counselor pastive.
As ex officio.
Pardon?
Dave.
Dave Castillo is present as ex officio.
I was just gonna ask, oh, I see him now, okay. Okay, will you guys help me keep an eye on that in case he raises his hand and? That'd be great. So, um. Do you have any announcements?
I don't really have any announcements. You know that we'll have a regular meeting on February twenty seventh. That's a Tuesday, I think, yeah.
Okay.
And that'll be the comprehensive plan reason that was remanded back to planning commission. And it'll be a public hearing, it'll be a regular public hearing, so.
Really?
Yep.
Okay.
Ask for our city attorney.
Oh, wow, okay.
And it, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I have. I don't. I, I had these links that I don't know why, I couldn't figure out if, about sending them, if it would somehow make a forum that people started sending back stuff, but these are just links uh, to um, the executive order that started the climate friendly thing and Eric has one. And a couple news reports and and the, the link to the appeals court documents, so in case you wanted to follow along and because it's been sitting there since, since May twenty twenty three, which is a long time.
Yes. They heard all the arguments.
Yeah.
Waiting.
Lots of motions. Yeah. It, it's weird because uh, we had an ELD go before the appeals court and their decision was out on that like in a week. So I expected, I was, it's like, what are they doing?
Yeah.
Who knows? Okay, uh, so without going in great detail, Kristen, would you mind telling people that were not at the presentation you guys had, oh, you were there, but, yeah, anyway, uh, just some of the basics about the requirements, how the requirements in the climate friendly zone is different from our normal requirements.
Okay, I'm gonna go quickly through James, uh, I can't remember his last name. And I always get it. Shireman. His, his PowerPoint that I sent you all.
Uh huh.
I'm gonna go through that real quickly because it's, 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 it's real basic and it'll get, get it.
You want us not to ask questions while, you wanna wait?
No, you, no, we can do, I mean, if I could answer them, I'm, you know, good. Happy to do that, um. So we won't go into the background on who James is.
Right.
Um, so it was, as you have mentioned, a climate friendly, um, the CEFAC, Climate Friendly Equitable Communities was established by an executive order um, in twenty twenty by Kate Brown. Apparently, um, it, this includes DLC D O dot and OD, O D O E. Um, the, uh, their focus is on urban areas. Base, basically, um, and the rules which are stated here, the CFA regulations are all in the O A R six sixty O two, O one two. Um, and that's our, that's, a lot of that is our transportation, um, planning. Those are our transportation planning rules. So, um, it includes parking reductions, EV charging and CFA designations. And I'd like to, for the record, our ex officio, mayor, um, air, airs flood is here.
There's a compute, there's a laptop over here, there's a couple of them, if you'd like to. We can just pull the, I'll pull the nameplate for you.
This one she moves. So because of the, um, automobiles as being a contributor to the greenhouse gas, um, that this is, was the rationale for establishing the CFA's and an opportunity to create denser mixed use, non-auto centric development. Um. The land use requirements, um, in the CFA will address multifamily residential and attached single family office type uses, non-auto dependent retail services and other commercial uses, childcare schools and other public uses, including public serving government facilities. Um, what they're doing, what we're, what's being required for the city of talent specifically is, um, is we, and I'm gonna switch to this slide, is we're between five thousand and ninety nine thousand nine hundred, nine thousand nine hundred and ninety nine. We, our area will, that exists that we've, that the council has acknowledged is thirty three acres. We have to have at least twenty five acres. The minimum residential density will be fifteen units per acre and we can allow up to a maximum of fifty, fifty feet in height. There is no maximum density also in this area. So the minimum density would be fifteen units per acre. Um, if you'd like me to go over the transportation requirements. Um, they, these require high density pedestrian bicycle and transit infrastructure, RVTD routes play the key role for this CFA area um, in the protection of bike lanes and crossings and infrastructure that is in good repair. Our parking, there is, there will be no mandate, we currently do not have mandates for parking within a half a mile um, of the frequent transit corridors, which is for us is Highway ninety nine and Talent Avenue. That's our transit or it, um, areas. And again, you, um, they've quoted O A R six sixty, O two, O one, two, O four, four, O. That, all those O A Rs is tran- transportation planning rules. That, that's what outlines all the regulations for our CFA. And I go over those all the time trying to figure those out, so it's, it's, it's a lot, but. Um, so we have fewer and smaller parking lots, um, led to, will lead to more housing. What, what they're doing is, we don't mandate any parking, so we're leaving that up to developers to uh, actually a- address the parking that is necessary. And part of that is, if it's multifamily or of five or more, they have to put in EV. Uh, they have to at least do conduit for EV stations up to, if it's five or, if it's multifamily, five or more, they have to do forty percent um, of their parking has to be EV. Otherwise, it's twenty percent of their parking has to be just, um, they just have to put in the, the conduit for potential EV. They don't have to put in the EV stations. Um, and as they've got here, less parking.
Can I just clarify something about that?
Yeah.
Sure. Um, I wanted to know, uh, so just to make sure I understand, if it's five or more, they have to put in forty percent of the entire station, right? Forty percent of their parking has to be the entire assembly, but it.
No, not entire, no, no, no. They just, no matter what, they just have to put in the conduit for EV.
It's, it's the same either way, it's just the.
Yes, exactly. They just have to address that and, yes.
Thank you.
Um. So it, I mean, the bottom line is, it's all about parking, creating less, making it higher density, more work live. Um. So some of the examples, um, that they've gotten, we've, they've done takeaways is, um, the key takeaways is the interstate highway and local street network enables both local and regional business and talent. Um, they'd like to rebuild. Uh, this is all about the Almeida fire and I think the mayor has brought this up a couple times to DLC D about how this looks for us because of the Almeida fire and the result of our lower density. So what they've done is they did an analysis of our codes and the best place that, um, our codes, wha- what the best place to put the CFA would be in a high density residential, in our high density residential. It didn't make sense because most of that's being rebuilt already because of the Almeida fire. It's all being rebuilt and a lot of it is much higher density. So, um, staff took a look at putting, and we worked with the project manager, um, team. Um, and you could see here in this slide right here, how it goes into, the most green makes, makes it the best. But we put it mostly in our central business district and highway commercial district and highway business, yes.
Can you go back one, Krista, back to the?
Here.
I was trying to understand this comment. You guys might be able to help me. So the like for like rebuild, um, has resulted in lower density homes appearing in areas planned for eventual higher density. Um. I think I understand what they're saying is they're saying eventually a single family home in a residential high density over time will go away and they'll build back, in, in theory, build back, um, to the code. So the non-conforming uses kind of go away eventually. Is that what they're saying?
That sounds like what they're saying, but that's not really what the reality of what's happened. We actually.
Building back with.
I, we have had higher density rebuilds. A lot of it is, is mainly because of the ADU rebuilds.
Right.
In addition to single family. And then we have had quite a few lots that have been subdivided and they get their like for like, plus they have to build then at least a duplex on.
That's why that jumped out to me because it doesn't seem accurate.
No, and yes, I agree with you. Um, so does anybody have any, so we, they went through the codes, they addressed what, what made sense. Um. But staff felt that, um, the better area would be our central business district, the lots that are vacant along the Highway ninety nine, which is our gateway site. The site across from the gateway, um, are all vacant and then we wanted to eliminate as much as possible the historic district, although that, the gateway site is in our historic district and up north is, um, in the historic district. And I'll jump to that. So this is the, the, the general area of our, uh, S, uh, CFA area. It's in the central business district and central business highway. Um, it's along, obviously, on route, long ninety nine and has access to our, um, RVTD. Uh, is, it's along the bus, it's, it, it's bordered by ninety nine and our bus route, so it made sense to make it it, um, located in that area. I don't know if he has, he doesn't have a cup. He doesn't have the actual CFA area, which I can put up on, on there.
I think it's down a few maps.
It is, it's in the memo and I could, and I'm happy to put that up if you'd prefer to see that. So the changes that you, that he has outlined here is that, um, is of course the fifty feet um, in height of buildings that is a possibility. Um, he doesn't mention the parking or the, the non-mandated parking. Um, and then of course the mixed use, um, development that it will be encouraged in this area. Uh. There have been studies done, these ability studies about mixed use and it, and I think we've talked about this before, how mixed use is difficult because generally the commercial, the commercial is being upheld by the residential. And it's very expensive to build, um, a mixed use because you're built, because of the funding, um, requirements for it. But, um, that is, it's always a push for, 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 it's, that's always, that's been a push for the last ten years to do mixed use and in small communities and large communities. It really does well in, um, very urban areas. In this area, it will be difficult to move forward, but I, I hope that it catches on and people want to build some mixed use and, and we do have SNAP fitness, which is our ideal mixed use development. So hopefully that'll, but I do know that it was a real struggle for them to build that as well. So, um, I'm happy to go, I'll, I'll find that map for you so we can get there. We'd talk about, here it is. So right here is the CFA area. That was what was determined, as you can see, it takes in, um, both sides of the highway just there at our, um, at the intersection of West Valley View and ninety nine and takes in the TID area and then goes up. Taking in, which is pretty much all historic district as well. So that's gonna be a conflict.
So, uh, go, Eric, go ahead.
Oh, um, so I want to make sure I understand this. Um. Because the memo says cities may use CFA areas from the study or any other qualifying area. But a CFA has to be done for cities over five thousand.
Yes.
Okay, so we have to come up with the CFA.
Well, this council's already acknowledged the CFA. And that's why the next step is to then look at our codes and see how we will address the codes to acknowledge our CFA.
So you're saying that the CFA boundary as on this map is set then?
Yes, and it because we're also doing the Bear Creek border.
TGM.
TGM. We could technically move our CFA to just be along ninety nine because they're very similar in what they're requesting of us. They, all of it's about, you know, making it livable, walkable, bike friendly. Um, I'm not sure how, how, um, reasonable that is on our highway because we have, but, um, we, I mean, the speed has been reduced, so that might be a possibility that we could make that happen.
Well, I just wanted to say, I, and I may have expressed it prior at the prior meeting, but I, I probably didn't because I wasn't totally clear on the, what's required. Um. What, what I've, I like most of the, the requirements within here, except for the fifty foot requirement.
Yeah.
And it's difficult to take too when you consider that in March twenty twenty, when this was coming out of Salem, we were in the final stretch of our Title eighteen code rewrite. And, you know, here's a city talent that has bested Portland Metro in our ADU ordinance. We voluntarily complied with Senate Bill two thousand and one. And we are the ideal city that's cooperating and collaborating with DLC D and trying to rewrite our code so that we can show, we can exhibit efficiency and expand urban growth boundary. Um, and then it's like, so we elevate our heights and now it's like, before we're even, well, actually during the process, this is coming down to us that we're gonna have to elevate them ten to fifteen feet more. Uh, and we're, you know, mandatory compliance and it's just like, man, no good deed goes unpunished is kind of how it feels from DLC D, which is their reputation. I don't mind saying, uh, people love to rail against them and it's hard to argue with them with, when you see stuff like this. Maybe for the wrong rea-, you know, different reasons than what people typically complain about DLC D with, but, um, but anyway, that, that's a tough one and credit to staff on pointing out that, is it four nineteen Arnos? I forget which, the exact number. That three story on Arnos that isn't even forty feet tall, you guys were like, hey, this is gonna look odd and sure enough, it looks really out of place down there. Um, we didn't have a choice, we'd already elevated to forty feet in that zone. But that building is, it's just like, wow, that's, and so we're not even at fifty feet. And we're trying to come into an area that already has existing single story buildings and it's like, I just, I can't imagine feeling comfortable supporting fifty foot tall structures without looking at setbacks and buffering and parks and different things. without looking at setbacks and buffering and parks and different things, but it sounds like it's getting crammed down on us.
Yeah.
So anyway, I just wanted to editorialize there a little.
Oh, Anna, do you have any questions of Kristin?
I do, and, and I think he says, but I want, this area, is it? Are we stuck with that area? Because she said we can move it over to just Highway ninety-nine, so we, we still have flexibility in where the area can be?
Well, I don't know how much flexibility we have. I believe as long as we maintain our, within the regulations, it's twenty-five acres. We have to have blocks that are no more than five. I don't, there's all kinds of criteria, something five point five. So I don't know, so it's, I, I'd have to read it all.
Right, so if we found another area that met all that criteria, we could.
I mean, we don't have a lot of area to move it to. And it makes sense that we at least keep it around the ninety-nine corridor. Some of our corridors already being built in. Yeah, it's gonna, this is, this is an area that had the least amount of building. It, it does take in some of our downtown. As you can see, it goes to the roundabout and all that vacant lot that was, those vacant lots in the fire. Will there be fifty-feet development? That's, that's gonna be tough. I mean, I suppose if, yeah, you want to maximize your residence, you could do commercial on the ground floor and three stories of, of residential.
Four stories, right?
Yeah, 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 ground floor, commercial and three stories of residential. Yeah, so yeah, you could definitely do that and that might happen. It is gonna completely change the look of Talon. Absolutely.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, so you have to require people to do these fifty. We don't have to require them. If, that's their option to do it. Option. I believe, we're not, we don't have to, they do have to do fifteen units per acre if they're going to put residential in there. And that's going to be tough to get on those lots.
Right.
And that's what we're finding on, even in our high-density, we have eighteen units per acre and we have, there's a, a unit, parcel that was burnt. And they're looking to rebuild and they had, they wanted to rebuild back the one, two, three. There's a three or four units. And I said, you're going to really have to increase that density. You're not even at eighteen units per acre. So they, they have and it's going to be a big multifamily right near the three stories. So, and they're going to have some three stories there. So it's going to completely change that whole area.
Derek, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I think for study session, it seems safe to me. So can you cha- can a municipality change regulations? I'm not talking about parking, obviously, or some of the other stuff within the zone, the, within the C F A area in order to.
The next step, like I said, is going to be looking at our zoning and, and doing that analysis of what we need to change. Will we do an overlay, which I would prefer to do an overlay in our C F As in case it moves or anything? Or do we just change the, the zoning for that? Change all of our zoning to reflect the C F A?
What I mean is can you change regulations within our zoning that don't apply to parking and the things that they're going for here? Such as setbacks? Or are they dictating?
No, they don't dictate setbacks. They're not dictating any of that.
Okay.
They're just dictating the density, no parking mandates and that it be high, yeah, the high density.
And then I, I wondered this too, given that we were engaged in such a ambitious Title eighteen zone code. I say that because most, I don't, I think most small cities don't. They're not leaning into it like we did because we're for these things. We share the same goals. Why, why isn't, I don't like this one size-fits-all thing that, I, I get it, the state's trying to govern the state. But why, why aren't we looking to T A four and T A five?
Time out, okay. I didn't, I don't want this to be a long meeting. And, and if you'll excuse me, I would like, I would like to cover some of the, the issues of why I asked to have this meeting.
Oh, okay.
And because, because we could, we could plow through this thing for a long time if we got into that. And we're not all here, we're missing a couple of people. But I would like to call attention to the things that I would like us in a regular session to, to talk about. And, and maybe make a recommendation to the council about. And, and.
This question that if I, if you allow me to just finish it, will be my last one that will wrap, that will inform my future.
Put a ribbon on it.
Okay, my question is, why, why couldn't we, given that our, we've met efficiency by D L C D standards with our zone code change? Why couldn't we do our C F A in T A four and T A five where you've got a clean slate? And you're not trying to.
With our U G B. It's not in our U G B.
I know, but.
At this point, they won't even let us look at that to go into our U G B.
Right, but they won't, that was because of the population forecast and our lack of efficiency, right?
Yes.
And so I just don't, I mean, it's like, that is like the, to me, I mean, except it might, it's just a question I want to pose for the future. I don't need to get into the details, anyway.
And I can talk about that too.
Okay, so my, my issues with this are the top-down, no goal one public involvement. You know, springing on it, springing on us. And then we got it and the, and the line had already been drawn where it was going to go. And it, the, I was told at the original presentation that the part of our historical area that this covers, the historical requirements are gone. They do not exist. And for us to make, for our city to have made that decision without public input, I don't think it's okay. I also read in, one of the many things I read, that when they get to phase two, we can change things. We can change the lines. Are we in phase?
Phase two is about the code, strictly about the code.
Okay.
And it, and that, and that's not necessarily what you just stated is not, is not correct. It does, it does not negate the entire historic.
That's what I was told by Jordan.
But that's not, that's, well, okay.
Okay, so.
Not gonna argue with that, but that is not correct.
Because that's what she said, she said it was, they were gone off the table.
No, we can, we can oppose our design criteria in the historic district.
We can make them historical-looking five-story buildings. Was that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
So what, I don't know. I don't know if I can ask you to do anything, but.
No.
We could, I, I'll see if I can find it then. Okay, and the other thing is that, but, that I feel like we have time now to, to not do anything because we don't know how long it's going to be tied up in court. Fourteen cities in a county are fighting this in the court. And, and what had been a separate fight over the same exact issues was the state building division, not, not the division, like the builders, the home builders. They're against it, so the, the appeals court just rolled them into one. But, you know, to, and they had the same argument, but I don't know. I can't imagine that the home builders would be fighting something unless they thought they couldn't sell it. But anyway, that, they're part of this fight too, but to me, that means a lot that they're against it. But anyway, so we don't know how long it's going to be there. In the meantime, we're just getting started on a feasibility study that maybe will lead to a change in our U G B to an area where something like this would not be in our downtown core. And so that's, those things are the, are the issues I would like for us to take up when we're together in a more official capacity and decide if we want to make a recommendation to the council about that. And, yeah.
Question, is it too late to intervene in the, the litigation? I assume it is, huh?
Yeah, because they, they're not taking any more motions or anything. And, you know, and I've, I'm, I feel, I'm disappointed that, I don't know if our city council was ever given that as an option, like, not everybody, about becoming part of the appeal. So, yeah.
I don't know that we would have wanted to do that.
I mean.
I mean, it's being done. Other jurisdictions.
I know, I know, I know that our former governor had her heart in the right place about climate change. But when, when I read the executive order, and I've read it like three times, you want to get past the first seven pages of whereas? I can't, I can't find any marching orders in there that sound like this. I keep looking, it's like, and it's just like, and it just, it just feels staff-driven, but she also got regular reports, so she knew where it was going, so. I can't blame it all on the staff, but it's, there's no goal one alive and well in this process. And, and even, you know, even if we can't change that part of it, we can at least have some town halls about it and let people know. I know we had one that wasn't very well-attended, but I feel like we could do more to make the public part of this process.
I, I can direct, I can tell you what D L C D would say about the goal one stuff. And they would point to the C A C and the other committee and the, the meetings and, and say that that's your opportunity to participate. I mean, I know that's what they would say. Well, you might not agree with it.
I saw the first meeting we had here, it was done.
Right, yeah. I, I just know that that's what they'd say.
Yeah, but, but you know, goal one says that the public will involve, be involved in every level of planning. That's what the words that they used, every level. And that did not happen. So anyway, are there any other questions or? No?
Well, I would, I, I would just like to reiterate, I would like to understand. I'd like to ask somebody, D L C D, given that we were engaged in that process in order to be able to bring in our reserves, why we couldn't take the clean slate out there and make that a C F A. It's like you, you've got about twenty-five acres. It's like, it's just right there, you know.
You're talking about T A and T four.
T A four and T A five, yeah. And it's like, it's, so many issues go away when you have a clean slate and it's flat, it's easy to access to the utilities, it's on a corridor. I mean, maybe it, the council decides that it's too far out and you don't want to string out downtown that far, like that, that's a genuine issue. But it's like.
It's not anything like as far away as I live.
Right, right, but I just, it's just strange. It's, it just seems weird that we're trying to jam this, these puzzle pieces into a place that doesn't fit when we get this sitting there.
Wait, how long do you think the feasibility, like feasibility study will take?
Well, I just got a notice that there, we're still waiting for D L C D to approve the contract on their end, so. I think, and I haven't heard anything about the phase two for C F A going forward. So I have been contacted by, about the Bear Creek T G M phase two, but not C F A. So I think the, D L C D is very busy right now. They've got a lot of grants out there. We've got four of their grants. So I think that they're all trying to get everything moving in the right direction and, and go forward with, with, with the grants that we have and getting all the consultants put together and all that stuff. So I, I'm just, I'm kind of in a holding pattern waiting to, to, I think it's all going to hit at once. We are working on our B L I, which is another grant that we got from D L C D, the Building Lands Initiative. And that's moving forward pretty quickly. We'll, we'll do a stakeholders meeting and then start having public meetings for that here soon.
How can we do the B L I before the feasibility study?
Because we have a lot, we have buildable land.
And, yeah, we do.
Okay, but if you, I just wanted to point out to you all because I know Debbie is in attendance. She, and I, and I say, I gave you all that letter to read. And I told her I would read it, but I do want, if you, if you rather I not, that's fine. Just for the record, you do all each have the letter that Debbie, Debbie Rappaport sent in. But she, so just, I want her to know that if you would rather me not read it, that you.
No, why don't you read it and then we can read along with you and we'll all have read the letter.
Dear City of Talent Planning Commission, regarding overview and analysis summary, executive order signed March tenth, twenty twenty by Kate Brown to lower greenhouse gas levels. D L C D regulations adopted twenty twenty-two to include reform of parking reductions. This is confusing as a citizen and resident of Talent for the past fifteen years. There is housing need everywhere and naturally this would require added parking when creating additional housing. My concern is there has been a parking problem around town for some time that needs to be recognized and addressed. People will always have a car no matter, no matter, unless they can't drive anymore. Look at the statistics on that. Here we are in Talent, a quaint little town. I want to bring it, bring to your attention an example of a two-thousand-square-foot two-story structure built about five to six years ago. A structure built by, in the C B D district, abutting properties which are considered in Old Town and not, and was constructed without any parking whatsoever. This structure was to be two, two businesses on the bottom floor and two residents upstairs. However, there is no business. There are over eight vehicles that belong to this structure. These cars still fill the streets up and around the library as well. What is Old Town to Talent? There needs to be a design, design standards with buffers set to areas that abut the Old Town perimeter. I ask you to look at what has happened with the views of our Old Town community with the construction of the monolith and inappropriate solar panels behind the community center. Please save the community and Old Town charm. Sincerely, Debbie Rappaport, community member, homeowner.
Thank you. I, I did notice that building one day recently, that there are people living where it was supposed to be business-only. I'm a pray. Yeah, that was, that was a sad, that was hard when, I remember when that application came through because somebody looked at a map and drew a line and never walked down the street. Wow. Right, thank you for your letter, Debbie. And does Counselor Pesto have anything to ask or say? I see nothing.
No, I'm just listening and taking it all in. There are a lot of questions and it'll be interesting to see how things progress. Thanks for asking.
Anybody else? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you. Kristin, how, how would I find out about that historic?